Commercial shop that I was in any violation whatsoever. I had not a clue that there was anything wrong with what I was doing. So, and most of what I do, you know, I do very few jobs for other people's stuff. I mess around with my stuff. That's picking up some. My son-in-law, my daughter moved to the area, so I'm trying to keep him busy. Or he's trying to keep busy, make him live. So, I told him that if he could work out of my shop and we would have, they would have a place to continue on once I'm gone. So, that's what I'm working towards. And like I say, I had no idea that I was in any, any violation of anything. So, if you have any questions for me or whatever, I mean, I'm here to get this straightened out.
And commission members, you have questions of the applicant?
I have one. Oh, I'm sorry.
What is your waste product? Do you have any waste as a result of your operation?
You know, I haul scrap on whatever, whatever left is just a little bit of scrap iron. I take it to someone and scrap it out. I don't have, I don't use any real chemicals or anything like that for what I do. I mean, I use oxygen, settling, electricity, and I apply to the gunner. There's no waste to that. There's really no, no, no waste byproduct in what I do. I have a wood shop in there too. I, you know, and there's, there's no waste products from a wood shop. So, not much there.
Is the noise a factor, no?
What's that?
Noise, is the noise a factor?
I don't think so. I mean, I've, I've got eight-inch-thick block walls. I've got R-19 insulated ceilings. I put a, a door in the back of the shop. I put two-inch styrofoam in it to keep that down pretty much. I do work with the doors open so that the breeze can come through. Probably the noisiest thing I run is, is a, a wood plater once in a while, but it's confined inside the wood shop and all closed up. So, my neighbor was running his in the backyard the other day, and he's a lot louder than I am. Once in a while, I do a little bit of vehicle work. And there's always some hammering and banging there, but probably not much more than any of anybody's garage, I don't think. Most of my machinery is just not, there's not that much noise that I know of. I don't consider it noisy anyway. I mean, I do have forklifts and, and a couple of old forklifts and stuff like that, but I, you know, I, they have exhaust on them and everything. They have mufflers and everything. So, I think I'm in pretty good shape that way personally. I could be wrong. I mean, there may be somebody that disagrees with me, but as far as I'm, I'm concerned, I think I'm in pretty good shape.
When did this start? When did you start this business?
What's that?
When did you start this business?
Well, I've been there for about nine years now. And, and I really, you know, I really don't, don't even, haven't even considered the end of business. Like I say, people, when, when you do things like I do, people show up on your doorstep and ask you to do stuff. And basically, that's what I've been doing. I have not gone out and drummed up any business or like, or anything like that. Somebody, somebody comes in and asks for something done, I try to take care of them if I can, or if I don't. I'm, I'm pretty picky because I really don't want to work that hard anymore. Like I say, I'm getting my son-in-law and my daughter involved in it, so it'll probably be, it'll probably be a little more active than what it has been in the past at this point.
And has used increased at all? I mean, is it, is it a heavier use now than, than it was in the past?
I don't really, I don't really think so. I mean, I've done a few, a few a little bit bigger jobs, but you know, my line of work is I used to tear down sawmills and, and pull them back up. And I've been a millwright and a machinist and a fabricator my whole life. And what I'm doing is very small time. In, in my, my consideration, I mean, well, I'm really, you know, I've, I've built, I've built some chimney caps for somebody. I've built a, a couple of arbers and fences. There's not been, you know, I mean, I'm working with 16-gauge and eight, and, and 10-gauge metal, which is a 16th of an inch thick and an eighth of an inch thick for the most part. It's all yard art and stuff like that for the most part. And like I say, fences and gates and stuff is about all I really do for the most part. And I do, I do work on my own vehicles and stuff there. I mean, the shop's capable of just about anything, and I'm capable of just about anything. So, I wanted my shop to be able to do whatever I wanted to do. But as far as it, it being my, being my livelihood, I'm on, I'm on social security and that pays all my bills. You know, I just, I just do, I do jobs for people, and it's all pretty light stuff in, in my opinion. I, I could be wrong, but I think what I do is all pretty light real stuff.
And I'm looking at the, the addresses, so you do not live on this property?
No.
What are your plans for fencing?
Chain link fence? I've been, actually, I've been collecting chain link fence for quite a while now. I'm a bit of a sprout. And when I, when I have a project to go for, I don't usually go buy a lot of new stuff. I've probably got, I think I've, I've managed to come up with about 300 feet of, two or 300 feet of, of chain length, six-foot chain length fence since I started collecting them the last couple of years. So, I'm a little slow getting some things done, something that I've been working on all along. So, that's what I plan on doing. At this point, I've given the property survey, and whatever it takes to put a fence around it at this point, we'll do it. I will buy all the stuff that I, whatever I need to do, we do it. If that's what I need to do.
Any issues with the neighbors?
What's that?
Any issues with the neighbors?
Any history with the neighbors?
Issues.
I, I might hear, I-
Yeah, mine too. Any issues?
Issues with the neighbors?
Yes, the neighbors have any negative-
Not, nothing really that I know of, other than this one has complained a little bit about my squeaky door in the back.
No, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I said, this one has complained about my squeaky door in the back of my shop. But other than that, that's the only issue I know of. Now, if she has some more issues, I'm sure she'll be present.
She has an opportunity to speak, yes.
Yeah.
Our civilian inspector is here. Do you have comments or questions?
All right, did I put slats in the chain link fence? Is that the intent? It needs to be okay?
A chain link fence, yeah. I'm saying, are you gonna put slats?
He's gonna put wind block.
Yeah, yeah, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll make it long secret.
Any further questions? The applicant?
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, that's what we're going on to next here in terms of anyone else who's to speak on this subject.
So, in terms of the fencing-
Please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Morgan Douglas, and I'm not very good at speaking in front of people, so excuse me. In terms of the fencing, anything that he doesn't have in material, we will make happen. The other things that I understood was that you wanted a TPT number, and we have applied for the TPT number. We're going to wait until the fence is up to do the, the inspections. I think there were three inspections, the fire department, I can't remember what the other ones were yet. Once the fence is up, we'll get those inspections done. And, you know, make sure all the alleyways are the appropriate distance and width. And then we will apply for a tax license. Because out of the jobs he was talking about, maybe one a month actually produces income. A lot of it's just trading. You know, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. So, we will apply for a Biscayne City tax license. But I figure we'll wait until we get, we have to wait until we get the inspections and until the fence goes up. We will not be in town for your next city council meeting because we have, we're doing a mechanic job at an art fair in, art festival in Utah. So, we will not be here for the July meeting, or August meeting. We will be here for the September meeting. So, we're already scheduled for that meeting. Does anyone have any questions for me? I'm a significant other. I'm the one that bitches at and doesn't get stuff done.
Do you have any cool pictures of the stuff you create? It's a joke.
We do.
Don't mess with me.
We do.
There's actually, if you want to see a really fabulous fence, go over to Douglas Road. And there is a fence there that has about four panels, and the fence is interactive for six-year-olds. So, there are things that move, and there's tools that the kids can use. And the reason he did that fence was the young man who was in the house was unemployed. And when he was putting drywall up for the shop, the young man came over and did the drywall. So, for this young man, his name is Robert, he created this fence for his six-year-old. And it's a very, very cool fence. We'll definitely take you over to see it. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Nope? If you need me to bitch at him, I will.
Have you, have you opened the public hearing?
That's what we're doing now.
Okay.
Would you like Bush to speak?
Me?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess. I mean, they're my neighbors. I think we get along pretty well. There's just a little bit of annoyance from me because I'm right next to them, right? And, you know, the reason he probably doesn't hear a lot is because he's very hard of hearing. And so, I'm dead, I'm blind, he's deaf. So, I'll be out there just enjoying myself, sitting there drinking my tea, and all of a sudden yelling and screaming and doors opening and, you know, the motorcycles going and stuff like that. So, I mean, I hate to say anything really, but I mean, it's just a little annoying because it really was a church to begin with. I don't know how it got to be a C1. And the fence, that I understand that I won't be able to see through it. And so, basically, I guess he keeps things pretty good, but, you know, it would be nice to have a fence and have it more private for his, you know, his business and not be the site as you go down. Well, I, I tell people turn left at the junkyard, because that's what it looks like to me. So, anyway, that's, that's about it. So, I just hope you have all your debts in order, make it happen in a nice way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get your name then? Your name?
Jo, J O. Oldfield.
Thank you.
O L D F I E L D.
Are there further comments? Anyone else who should speak on this? Please come up and write.
I'm Lisa, Hot Rod's daughter. Excuse me, I can't shake her. Nick, my fiance and I filed a business license for him to work and use the space, just so we know that's the, and TV numbers and stuff. And I know they, they tend to work between, you know, like 8:00 morning and 4:00 in the afternoon. They're not there all night. They're not, you know, trying to be a public nuisance. So, and I'm hoping to, you know, later on, I'm gonna work with them and keep it going and have somewhere where people can get some things done and trade and, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments? If not, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner, discussion.
I, I would just say that as long as the health and safety concerns are taken care of, and there's proper screen fencing, I see no reason not to approve the motion. Those would be my only concerns. As the young lady said, put up a fence. As Joe said, put the slats there, fine. And just make sure, I'm sure you have fireage extinguishers and all the appropriate things. That's the biggest thing this day and age, especially with the dry weather and everything else, the sparks and everything else. We just want to make sure. But other than that, it's just a matter of semantics with zoning and everything else. So, let the guy have his thing. As long as it's health and safety, we're, we're, we're good to go. That would be my, that'd be my comment. But health and safety has to be respected. Mistakes happen, embers and all that other kind of stuff. But other than that, and the privacy of the screen fence, so.
Other commissioner comments?
With that, I move the planning zone-
Wait a minute, let me, let me call your-
Easy, true.
Yeah. Additional staff comments? Staff recommendations?
Oh, but we're here because of my recommendation to start off, and so you're pretty much familiar with it, that this will, this will solve the issues that have been going on. I'll be happy with that.
Okay. I'll call for a motion then. Go on, please.
Yes, okay. Now, I move the planning zone commission recommend mayor and council of the city of Biscayne approve special use permit application 23 dash 01 for 39 old Douglas Road to have a metal fabrication shop.
Okay. I have a roll call vote. Mike Ablen?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second? Pardon me, pardon me.
Thank you.
I'll make a second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Okay, Mike Ablen?
Yes.
David Cobb?
Yes, thank you, Mike.
David Cobb?
David Brown.
Oh, Brown, you've got two new Davids here.
You got the Cobb.
I, I, I said Cobb. It's actually David Brown. I was about to order here, pardon me.
I will say, yes.
Okay, now, David Cobb?
Yes.
Okay, Douglas Dunn, yes. Alicia Spirthing?
Yes.
Okay. And Doug Taylor?
Yes.
Agenda item two is city, a discussion of possible recommendations for mayor and council. Amendment to the city code, article 9.4, removal of litter, 9.401D, dilapidated structures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you, if you'd like to-
If I may add, the definition for dilapidated structures, it's going to, it's gonna make it possible for us to deal with some of the boarded-up buildings that we were talking about a couple of months ago. And it will, it'll enable us to, to make the town cleaner and better.
Okay. Questions of staff?
So, is this worth helping blocking, not RV, car, van, dilapidation?
These are, these have to do with properties and structures that are boarded up.
I, I'm just gonna voice it. I am concerned about enforcement as I was in the past. I was told by city attorney, I guess, through deputy city clerk, and I think we all were, that that isn't our purview, but I am concerned. I know that Mr. Ward and Mr. Rodriguez are on a, basically a week, a 40-hour week now between the two of them. And I just, is it, am I, am I wrong? Was I wrong?
Fifty?
Oh, fifty, okay. Fifty-hour week between the two of them. And I know this business, and I know this city, and that's not enough time. But, so I've made my statement. I, I think this is a, a good tool, but I'm just worried that, you know, can we use, can't we use it because there's no enforcement for it?
You know, I, I was gonna say, we don't really have that many structures that are boarded up that's gonna, that's gonna take us away.
You have so many other things-
Hopefully, once we've taken care of it, it'll be, be more for a while. What's that?
You have so many other things on your plate.
We do.
Yeah.
And then you, you know, you know what it's like.
Yes, I know, I know.
Here's a question I have is, I mean, what is the defin, definition of removal of litter? What is the definition of a dilapidated structure? I mean-
Well, it's kinda in there. I think, I think we've got a pretty good job of defining it here.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, A, B, C, and D.
Okay, yeah. I didn't, I didn't see it. Okay, strength that question.
We may want to read it into the record or something. But, no. The only thing I would consider adding to this, is there any specific code, sprinklers, smoke detectors, anything of that nature that we can add to this to strengthen this a little bit more?
I don't think there is.
It's got some teeth. I'd like to get it nice and tight so there's no loophole. So, if you have a vacant building-
Want to get into dilapidated structures?
Well, dilapidated, okay, but if it's dilapidated, someone wants to argue with you, then fine. If you're required to put a smoke detector in, or you're supposed to require certain things, then you can't escape or do a use of loophole.
Yeah, any residential use is supposed to have a smoke detector.
Right, so, do you, are you comfortable, Joe, that there's a, there's not many loopholes in this amendment?
There probably is, but I don't see it yet. We've, we've done, we've done that one too many times.
I understand. You don't want to guarantee.
You know, they say you build that, you build that, that 15-foot-tall fence, and then they got the 16-foot-tall ladder, and you build it higher than the ladder, you know.
I know.
People see that as a, as a problem.
Doug, I think it's a step in the right direction. I mean, the enforcement is gonna by default, it's gonna have to come, it's gonna have to come from tax resources or whatever it is, but at least this is setting the groundwork so that we've got some teeth into something. It's a, it's a starting point, so.
We've got 89 Main Street, I think it is. Dave Cook's place, and the old Quick Mark there across from B and D Lambert, which are the primary ones that are, they're not, they're not contributing anything to our, to our city, they're actually taking away. And those are the two that are the most, we get the most issues on. And by having this in place, I think we could get something done with those.
Joe, give me some momentum. You start with one. Maybe it'll be a grassroots thing, with enough people bitching and complaining, so you're like, hey, look, here's where it says we're supposed to do it. Let's get some community support, and at least it's answered, all right? So, you know, you gotta start someplace, yeah.
And what about fire inspection? I'd raise that question again. We do have a fire inspector. Is he any help on issues like this? Not usually on these kind of things, but it is a resource that we, that we fall back on many times to reinforce what we're trying to do. And a lot of these, a lot of these dilapidated and overgrown, you know, the definition of litter is really, really broad, as you see in here. But a lot of the thing, well, when we had a full-time fire inspector, and we don't now, he was handling all of these for us.
And they had this, they, they made a list of it. What was it? The bad buildings list or something?
Yeah, but, but the fire inspector was, was handling all the, these, Article 9.4, the notices and all that. He had, he had stepped up and taken on those, but they've, they've taken that position away as a full-time job. And so, I, we can't expect after the first of this month, we just can't expect to be having a lot of help on that. You were ma, making reference to two buildings. I turned that a lot more than that in terms of, of issues. I mean, I was thinking specifically about- You know, we're talking about the boarded-up buildings? And there's, we were ending it earlier, several months ago, those were coming up, and this was, this was the solution that was, that's being proposed, that what we were, what had been brought out by the commission.
This is in reaction to 88 Main Street, that boarded-up building, to enable the city to do more along those lines. What's the status of that? Waiting for this?
Of which building?
88 Main Street? You said boarded-up building?
Oh, yeah. Today was, actually, we, we didn't have the, the staff listening today that takes care of it. But today, we had sent out a letter to the owner, and no, I don't know if it's, I think it was an NOV, or maybe it was a friendly letter, but today was the day, by coincidence, that the, the period of time that they were audit came up this morning at 9:00. I got the notice on my computer, but it's, it's, it'll have to wait a couple of days before something's done. But it's gonna wind up being, having a citation sent and a fine.
So, that's the next step if there's no response from the building's owner?
We had no response on it, no.
So, citations are next? Has the, has the building been secured?
The building was open in the back.
Yeah.
And Public Works crew is going to go secure it, but it hasn't been done up to now.
Waiting for, were they waiting for this period to give the owners the opportunity to secure it themselves, or they just haven't gotten around to it?
They really just haven't gotten around to it.
Okay.
We have the right of securing it, whether or not they've got, they've been notified.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
They haven't been properly motivated. They haven't been properly motivated. But they're ultimately billed for it, correct?
Oh, yeah, we don't do it for free.
Yeah. As the, there were drug-
No, then there's a lien.
People in there was taking care of-
People buy the tax lien.
There was an interesting thing in the paper immediately after that, and I think it's, I don't know, I put it together that maybe this was, there was a cascade effect, and there was a number, and the city went, wanted to be involved in something. And I think that it, I'm kinda one, nobody tells me these things, this is my own conjecture, but that, there was a cascade effect, and the other people were arrested regarding that. It looked like opiates that were in the way, in the picture.
Thank you.
So, just, out of curiosity, so you notify the owner, they have to take action. If they don't take action, there's a citation and a fine. What if they still don't do anything? Like, how do we resolve it?
On Tuesday, we had a meeting with, with the magistrate, and the city attorney, and the city manager, and a whole bunch, and several of the, the top two police officers, discussing this very same thing. And what happens is that they can, they can be getting a citation after citation after citation, and it'll rack up against the property, so eventually the, the, the penalties against the property are gonna be more than the property's court. But that's, that's legal people take care of those things, I don't.
Yeah, I'm just, it's like, then what do you do, right?
Well, typically, typically, it happens in the city of Tucson, they play, they place a lien.
We actually can take it, when we get enough, we get enough value against it.
You place a lien on the property, similar to a tax deficiency, and then people, thank you, and people actually can purchase those liens, and then you can begin the foreclosure process. So, that's not, it's not uncommon a, as a way of business for a lot of people. They buy tax liens, or they buy city-assessed liens, and with the sole intention, they get an interest on it, and then if they don't pay it, they foreclose on it.
Well, I was starting to make reference to another property. You said the concern about the old convenience market across from B and D. Even more of a concern to me is, I'm not sure what the name of the street is, but anyway, the street is behind the bank, Washington Federal. Anyway, anyway, yeah, just, anyway, I was there for a yard sale a number of months ago. Anyway, I called the fire department saying, I thought this was a fire trap. Because it's between two buildings which are inhabited, and I think there's two buildings that are not. And in this yard sale, I was able to walk through this building, and I thought it was a fire trap. So, I mean, I called the, the fire department, and I don't believe there was any response. I mean, I certainly, it never, it never responded to me. Is that on your list? I have never anything about that. Well, please look at that. I mean, it, it's, you drive by it all the time, but anyway, it's, you know, again, you, no one referring to, right? There's an occupied house on the end, and there's occupied house in the middle, and there's two properties, and they're side by side. I mean, there's no gap between them, and it's, it's full of burning stuff. I think, I think I know, but why don't we talk about it afterwards? Also, I did have a conversation with Mel Sord, our council representative, regarding a letter that we all received, saying this was not our prerogative to push this. And he said, it definitely is your prerogative to push this. He's not here to speak for himself, but anyway, that was certainly what he conveyed to me. And certainly, he's gonna be, continue to be a spokesperson for us in terms of pushing the fact that we do need additional-
that we do need additional staff support to address these issues, so.
Well, when they say I can bring the research I did, I'll bring it, and, uh, and I did quite a bit.
Well.
I want to bring something up, I'm not sure if it falls into the category of dilapidated structures, but I think it's at least adjacent. My understanding is that the design review board made a point of talking to, um, uh, the people in charge of the old high school, I don't believe it's Joseph Lewis, but the people who work for Joseph Lewis, and saying, hey, you're not gonna leave busted windows during monsoon season, we're gonna make sure of that, and there are busted windows, and it's monsoon season.
Right.
And then I was, um, riding down Bisbee Road today, noticing the old hospital, which I believe the city is responsible for at this point, and it seems to be the same thing, that there are busted windows in a historic structure during monsoon season, and what's the deal?
I thought we, I thought we had all the bor- the windows boarded up.
It's what it looked like from the streets, so I could, well, be wrong. I'm just looking at some of the upper windows and it's like.
All the upper windows, yeah.
Doesn't seem, well, well.
It's a concrete structure entirely.
Yeah, that one is concrete. The, the high school is wood inside the building. That was why they made that, um, caveat, which turned out, um, that they didn't do any, the applicant didn't do anything about it, but their project passed, so I, I assume part of the project is to, it's in their best interest to button it up.
Yeah, over a month ago, they were given a special, you know, a special accommodation because, because of the concern about the,
Yeah.
the windows, but I think we're, I think we're deprecating from our agenda, okay.
Are we ready to make a motion?
I mean, I'll make a motion. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the mayor and city council of the city of Bisbee the amendment to the city code Article nine point four, removal of litter nine point four point one D, dilapidated structures.
I'll second that.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carry. Agenda item three, discussion regarding updating the general plan, clean energy, affordable housing. Alicia, you kind of brought us to this point.
Yes, um, I forget the gentleman's name, but I reached out to him at the county, and there's, so legally, we're required to update it every ten years. The last time it was updated was twenty fifteen, so twenty twenty-five is right around the corner. Um, so I think, I'm gonna call it professional procrastination. That gives us sixteen months, uh, we are required to do a call to the public, so we need to get, you know, everybody together and get feedback from the community, and then we can start going through the process of, you know, updating. From, from this meeting, we had, you know, affordable housing, uh, renewable energy, maybe there's other items. Um, I know transfer of ownership over the last three years in Bisbee has been up thirteen percent. So we have a lot of folks in town, so hopefully, we can get the, uh, community involved here and, and make a general plan for the next decade. So I started putting together texts, uh, just reviewing other small town type, uh, general plans to see what their initiatives were. Um, I still have to look at the affordable housing side. Um, he also gave me a contact, uh, he's no longer doing that, but he gave me a couple more contacts to reach out to. Um, so that's on my list of conversations to have.
This is Mark Appel, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Mark Appel was formerly on our planning zoning commission, worked for the county planning department, and certainly was the one that coordinated the updating of the, of general plan when we did last, and so he's certainly the best resource we have here.
He's a close model to our general plan agenda.
Further comments? It did trigger off your, your statement here. When I was on the city council, we had a number of meetings with U of A Tech Center, which is off Peter Road, right on the interstate, and they are doing, have, have been, or involved extensively in terms of, uh, alternative energy. And certainly, you make reference to in terms of using mine properties for the location of wind and solar. And, and that was certainly something, we had, actually had a meeting, not only with the director, but also with, who was, I think, their dean of the school, School of Mining now, I don't know what we're calling it, School of Mining. And I think we met with Freeport at that time likewise, but anyway, I don't know if anything has happened since, but anyway, I'm certainly, uh, certainly a resource and, um, and, and there are certainly a number of, of, uh, at the Tech Center, different companies were testing out different, uh, techniques in terms of solar and wind, I think, solar in particular.
A lot of this is being driven by the Inflation Reduction Act.
Correct.
So there is an application right now for state and municipalities, it's called a greenhouse plant. And each state, they're gonna award one to each state, and then it'll trickle down. So like, this is an initiative being pushed by the federal government to add power to the grid. And knowing about the V L N program, other programs like that, it's like, there, I guess there's opportunity there, so we can decide as a community if we wanna be involved in those kinds of developments or not. I think Bisbee is a windy sunny place, so.
Does any of this sort of win over down to the level of E V charge stations?
Yeah, there's, so it's, it's three pieces, you have your E V charge, uh, your battery storage, as well as your solar, wind, hydrogen power is a big one that's in, um, Arizona. Um, so there's all kinds of technologies that qualify for these types of ones. And it's a really great way to generate long-term passive income as well if you are a property owner.
Well, it's interesting, I was just in Nebraska for a wedding, my grandnephew, his sister, uh, who had just been hired as the economic director for Green County, Wisconsin. She sounded just like you when I talked with her, we're at a wedding here in terms of what she was pursuing. So anyway, this is really, I mean, there's opportunities here.
Yeah, so it's like, so like four hundred and thirty-one billion dollars coming down from the Fed right now. And it's gonna be around probably for the next five years. We'll, we'll see what happens, but I don't know, that seemed to be the first step in my mind. It's like, hey, you gotta raise your hand by saying you're in a general plan, if you're interested in that. You know, it's the first place.
And what else could be done in terms of being proactive on a, as I said, when I was on the council, we were kind of pursuing this before the federal legislation existed there, but anyway, that, um, didn't get anywhere.
Um, so there's coalitions, um, so there's different coalitions, uh, for states, national, I think probably reaching out to those folks. Uh, Arizona Commerce Authority as well has some information, um, on their website. It's a network of, you know, talking to the right people and letting them know, you know, if that's something we decide that the community would want.
So as a commission, what would be our next step to support this, this initiative?
Got a whole meeting, I, we had to, we had to.
Whether we put it on, um, do we put it on the agenda for next month, or? I don't know specifically how to push it forward, but our commission.
Maybe if we're able to, um, push it a little more forward to a more active month rather than August, then in the meantime, find out some things that might actually give it some teeth at first, um, but, uh, maybe working backwards, we all know that, uh, there are four E V stations being installed in the city parking lot, 'cause I didn't know until it's bought in, it's a super thing, right? How did that come about? Can we have some of that, please?
Four E Vs are being plugged in where?
There's two, there's two in the lot next to the, uh.
The Soul, it's in the Souls parking lot.
Yeah.
Up in all this thing.
It looks to me like there's two fit, two.
There's two, correct.
But there's two on each wall.
Correct.
And that's behind Club Kilimanjaro, behind the wall we're building, it's behind you. You got a parking lot that you ran. I mean, that's an asset all the way around, right? How did that happen, Joe, do you know?
I believe that's our problem.
No.
Sorry?
Um, it came through, um, APS, they, I think it was a grant through them or something. They paid for the majority of it, we, we ended up having to pay maybe three thousand. That is what came from the ARPA funds, but the mayor had made a connection with APS for that.
Uh-huh, so did it go in front of city council?
It sure did.
Just curious, yeah, but.
Absolutely.
Um, and is it income generating?
No, not that I know of, no.
But it certainly is an asset.
Absolutely.
Are there more planned, is there like, uh, hey, you, there, here's an ideal number that you should have now?
Not that I've been made aware of, there aren't more planned as of right now. It's finding a location for them is the, yeah, the, the hard part, parking, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, but that's, that's the city law, correct?
Um, yes, words, yeah, correct.
Yeah, so, city has more laws if, if they wanted to turn this parking over to, it, it, it does double duty, right?
Absolutely.
As parking and as, as charging.
Yep.
Well, that's one of the things that I could do, or to, to promote it correctly and, and locate these E V chargers in strategic areas that are somewhat remote parking lots that tourists, visitors don't know about, 'cause everyone wants the path, comes down the main street, blah, blah, blah. But if you've got something like up behind the Higginsville Park or something, and there's two there, and that's communicated, they will pull some of that congestion, congestion, et cetera, up. It's not too terribly far from the end, you know, just, yeah. Well, that's fun, I didn't know you had four, I think I did.
They were, the mayor took a picture, I think, end of last week, and they're there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they might not be powered up just yet, but they're there.
The solar array is still functioning at a, at a waste treatment plant?
Correct, yes.
And how do we want to move forward? It seems to me, if I remember that the, I don't know what the name of it was, Planning Center in Tucson was actually hired to facilitate.
They were part of it, yes.
Uh, part of when we did the master plan before, and is this something that, an avenue that we need to pursue, or?
Um, I, let me follow up on that, to see if we need to, you know, use their services again or if there's some, another route we'd like to take. So I can bring you guys back some options, maybe.
Again, I don't sure, again, I, I talked to Mark Appel myself, and you did too, and I don't know to what, I mean, he's certainly very, very community oriented, so I'm sure that he likewise is, might be a candidate in terms of facilitating that.
Right.
That process, that we could formally do that.
Okay.
And you feel that that's the next step, is to update our master plan?
Well, by twenty twenty-five, we, we'd have to.
Right.
Right, so, um, yeah, I think, when I, when I communicated with him, basically, my understanding, the first step is call to the public. So it's getting something on the books to reach out to the community and get their input.
Were you gonna say something?
Yeah, it's, it's not really called the public exactly, it's a public meeting.
A public meeting, okay. So wherever we post public meetings and however we advertise, um, I would say we'd want to probably at least, I don't know, two to three months in advance, just to get a good turnout and do a really good job of, you know, finding everybody.
Last time, we really didn't have any public input at all.
Right, and it's probably where I was there.
And, yeah, we were disappointed.
Then we can do some strategic marketing methods.
Yeah, no, I know. So, and my question is, all right, could someone, could someone, uh, make a motion to make sure that this agenda item is back on our agenda next one?
This is just discussion, but I will put it on there for that.
All right, I think that's why I put it in form of question.
No problem.
And would you also think that the city manager could just clarify what he thinks?
Yep.
What's his thoughts are in terms of moving forward on it?
Absolutely.
It is something that my law would require to do, and, and we certainly have this consent here in terms of, of, uh, promoting of alternative energy, and certainly, I'm, we're all reading, this was the hottest weeks, it said the hottest Fourth of July, it's been hotter since the Fourth of July in a hundred, hundred thousand years to dry heat. So, I mean, we're certainly, this is a serious situation.
No, it really is, really no laughing matter, no. Phoenix is one-ten for date twenty-one now? Above one-ten?
Yep.
No, no, anything to say?
The other piece of this is APS is getting ready to do a rate hike, rate hike. So, I mean, I just, every day, I'm grateful that I have gas. You know, it's one of the benefits of living here.
Well, unfortunately, also is, uh, previously, the Corporation Commission had required alternative energy, a certain percentage of all energy generated be alternative energy, and, 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 uh, we elected a Republican Corporation Commission since then to remove that requirement. So certainly, the, the array that we have at the, at the, uh, here for the waste center, solid, uh, sewage treatment plant, was certainly motivated by that. I mean, APS funded that as well, but they, at that time, were required to provide a certain amount of energy through alternative uses, and that Corporation Commission no, no longer requires that, so.
So they still, if you look at their website, um, they do have, uh, initiative by twenty thirty to have a certain percentage be renewables. And they're doing it with what they call P E S, is my understanding of it. I just started, they moved that today, but, um, so, yeah, there's a lot to learn here, but, and then, of course, affordable housing, we know that's a huge challenge everywhere.
It's the elephant in the room. But that's for another discussion.
It'll be interesting to get some, get some templates from the other, um, community and how they're, they're worried about and how they're doing that, that'd be, um, it'd be very interesting.
Is that a grant you have to, is, is it a form of a grant that you have to apply for this, or?
Yeah, so it's all coming, so the, 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 affordable housing and, um, clean energy is coming through grant programs and also tax credits. So the tax credits are incentivizing for-profit companies to implement solutions. And then there's nonprofits that are in the mix as well.
So do we need to form some type of a subcommittee to put all this together? I mean, obviously, you can put it on the agenda, and then your files after the agenda. You get together some volunteers that are like yourself, that are knowledgeable on this, know how to navigate, and say, okay, go get the money?
I suppose you'd do that.
Why?
I'm not sure.
So how do we find out?
How do we find out what?
How to get the money?
Uh, oh, you go, you just go to the Department of Energy's website, and then it tells you everything.
Oh, I know, if you ever go on a government website, you don't know how to do it.
Yeah, we, we need somebody that's, yeah.
You need somebody to know, my point is, you need to know somebody who knows how to navigate through the myriad of government bureaucracy and all this other stuff.
Yes.
I just went to an S V A law, so I can just tell you that it's an arduous journey, and I ended up hiring somebody for a nominal fee, and the next thing, I know everything was done. And I'm like, gee, why didn't I do this six weeks later, earlier? Because they know how to go to the various pages, that's what I'm getting at. So we make the motion, and I think the next thing is, let's assemble a team, put some items on there, affordable housing, windmills, water, whatever you want, and then go after those, get the public involved, and say, here are the things that we can get, or that we can apply for, does anyone have any interest? Bike paths, whatever, and then the experts know how to go after those things. Well, I'd like to see, rather than hire someone who tells us what we need, because we seem to know what we need.
Sure.
I'd rather see us hire, and, um, saying us, I mean the city, hire a grant writer.
Right.
That could, you know, apply for these things.
I was told there is a city grant writer recently, hire.
No, I don't believe that, so I was, I didn't.
Someone said they met her, I think it was.
Danielle used to, I.
I'm sorry?
Right.
I think I shared that with you, and I was wrong, I was wrong.
And you were wrong. Never mind, okay?
Danielle Boucher, they used to write a lot.
Right.
Right.
But she, she, in, in her defense, has her own personal agenda, so she goes.
Of course, and it.
There's no harm in that, I mean, she gets the money, she knows how to do it, so if you want this, and you want that, and the public says, hey, we want to make this the coolest, funkiest bike town in the city here to.
the coolest, funkiest bike town in the city, here in the country, and there's grant money for it, then we got to find the person who knows how to do that.
So, so since Mel overrode the city manager in saying what we can and cannot recommend along these lines.
He just expressed that to me, so I'm obviously-
Since Mel expressed that it was indeed our business to make recommendations for how, how- Salary is spent, I certainly think it would behoove the city, and we had this discussion just you and I. When we thought there was a grant writer, that it, we, we certainly do need one, so why don't we?
But that's what, I, I think when you says Queen Assana agenda is going to motivate this thing.
Yeah.
We got to-
I just wrote a grant for Bisbee vote.
Along another vein, so shouldn't the city lead by example? We can, we don't, we, we are gifted our city hall at this point, but there is one being built. Is it going to be solar? Is there going to be new energy involved in that? How about Public Works, which I assume is next to the transfer station? That's where Public Works operates out of?
Public Works up, well, yeah, they work out there.
Yeah, okay.
There's a city hub.
Is that at all solar, you know, or, or clean energy?
Yeah, I, I, I almost want to take a step back and do it, it's like a coalition for Cochise County, right? Because you have Douglas, Yeravista.
Correct.
They've been getting grants, clearly they have resources. It's like, we are our own community here locally, but we are really in this boat.
Yeah.
And we're going to get a lot more done if we collaborate, I think.
And it really does-
It's a good part.
Yeah, I mean, it really does come down to who's going to champion.
But we're not cited up per view of the, of the planning zoning commission, because the execution of this is more a function of the city council and, and administration. But, but setting this, setting this up to where they can do that, by, by amending the, the general plan, is, is a great way to start. But talking about grant writers and all that kind of thing is kind of outside.
Yeah, that's below our pay grade, is what you're saying. Well, let's just put it on the agenda for next month, and see how things evolve. And that was a statement, that wasn't a motion.
I might also comment, and that is, in previous administration, it was called an I Bisbee Committee, which was the Economic Development Committee for the city, and that had been disbanded. And so the group that you're saying that was needed here to champion this, you know, no longer exists, so.
Yeah.
Another factor. But anyway, I think the conversation with the city manager, I mean, the fact is, you know, we've got a community with lots of needs and opportunities, but limited revenue. And so certainly, that, that's always going to be the issue, is that, you know, what, what we do first, I guess.
And just to plant a seed along the lines of intergovernmental agency cooperation, you know, they're building a new shelter as well, and that's being built by the county. It's going to be run privately by the Humane Society. But couldn't the city of Bisbee say, hey, you know, we're involved in this too? Can we use renewable energy?
That's a nice one.
That was a federal grant as well, so that was.
All the more reason, right? Because the federal government is pushing this all over the place.
Yeah, and they're pushing a lot for rural area as well, because they want to make sure rural's not left behind.
Don't get them all rural, not us.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it is more the city council thing, but, you know, what, what Alicia is talking about is not reinventing the wheel. I mean, clearly, we even talk about our neighbors that are already tapping into this stuff. So it's, it's questioning like, who, what kind of energies can be put toward learning, what that process is, and then you just change the address of the city in zip code, and you plug it in. I know I'm simplifying things, but that's the start, that's where it starts. Because we're not the first one to go after this.
Mr. Brown on, on taking the wheel on this.
Well, I guess also, Ashley, that, just clarify to the city manager, what is your point in terms of the county, I mean, certainly a county approach probably makes more sense than each individual community. But anyway, I'm not quite sure, and certainly, and Mark Appel would be able to answer that as well. But I, I'm, again, I'm not current anymore in terms of what's happening. I think his program is very much on water conservation.
Right.
And so I don't know whether he's in these other areas as well. But anyway, that's certainly likewise something to report back to us, whether there's an opportunity for, for that.
Not a problem.
Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Staff comments? Vote for the comments. Commission comments?
Make a motion to adjourn?
You got to comment before we do that? Okay, make your motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we adjourned this.
Thank you. Do you need a second? Oh, yeah, second?